Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Meeting for Monday, February 25, 2019. If we could have a roll call, Madam Clerk, to establish court.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Terry McLung?
I'm here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Terry Meyer?
Present.
Melissa Green?
I'm here.
And Susan Harmon is absent with notice.
Stand up. Pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Yes, okay. Motion made in second. I have a couple of items. If the council doesn't mind, if we can move under New Business, item number eight, discussion of legislative audit, move that up to the first item of New Business, so Mr. Clark doesn't have to stay through the whole thing.
Fine with me.
Also, it's been discussed, too, if you want to wait until we have a full council, to have Mr. Weaver talk about ex parte.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll defer that.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Green?
Can we defer to the next meeting, number one, since Ms. Harmon isn't here?
Well, that's another one, too, because Mr. Weaver doesn't have much on that yet either, so we'll defer that also.
Okay.
All right. Anybody have anything else? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve amendments February 11, 2019.
Second?
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes that submitted, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Under the Planning Commission, I think we have a vote for James Mitchell.
I'll make a motion that we approve Position Three for James Mitchell on the Planning Commission.
I think that's Position Six, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry, Position Six.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? In your packet, you'll see Hospital Position for Peggy Duncan is in there, and she'll be nominated, and she'll be brought up to the next council meeting.
And she's in the audience.
And she is in the audience here, if you all want to talk to her later on, too. Under Parks, we have David Hartman for Position Four.
I'll make a... I make a motion that we accept David Hartman for Parks.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we also have HDC, Position Four, for Marty Cogan.
I'll make a motion that we accept for Position Four, Marty Cogan for the HDC.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That brings us down to public comments. Do I hear a phone ringing? I do want to make a note, please turn your phones off or on silent, because it does affect our hearing and recording, so... But that brings us up to public comments.
Okay.
I'm Peggy Duncan, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you all. I know most of you by name and by face, but there were some of you that know me by face but don't know me by name and vice versa. But I have put in an application for the Hospital Commission, and I would appreciate it if you all would consider me. I've been in Eureka Springs since '89. Been here, actually, since '43, if you want to know the truth. My daddy kept me up here the biggest part of the time. But anyway, I intend to stay here till they carry me out on a slab, so depending on how long the good Lord wants me around, well, that's how long I'll be here. But anyway, I would appreciate you all considering me. Thank you.
Ferguson Stewart, 7 Harvey Road. I just want to let you know how proud I am of our local police department and the work they've been doing lately, and I just wanted to say that first. And also, I wanted to, as the other hat I wear is the Chaplain and Service Officer of the American Legion, I mentioned last meeting about our 100th birthday, and that is now going to be 10 o'clock to 4:00 p.m. at the Post on the 29th of June. There will be, we've got a poster contest going on to come up with that, and then Mickey here, who's on the committee with me, will be giving you more information. But I also wanted to formally invite every council member to that party, to that festivity, because we want you to know that we're Eureka Springs First and American Legion Second. So, thank you.
I'm Joyce Knowles from Deuceboro Lane here in Eureka Springs. I noticed that the CA PC denied your money for putting an accessible location downstairs, and this citizen agrees with them. This is an old structure, and I'm the... I took a look at the plans that we had, and I don't see them as complete in any way. I don't think it's a final figure. I didn't see anything about finishing out the building, the spaces down there, and I didn't see any material or labor sheet. I don't think it's a final number. Also, part of the problem I have with it is you want to spend $160,000, and we had a facility that offered $5,000 a year for us to have meetings in that facility, and that actually works out to 32 years at $160,000. And it makes me think, what are you doing with our money? You didn't want to go over there, because you wanted a private space so you could put all your sound equipment. You didn't have that over there in the courthouse. You don't have that here. So I don't think that was a super necessary thing that you needed over there. There were personality conflicts. You all didn't like... One of the council members didn't like somebody that sat on the board over there. And the other thing is, you demanded things from them. You don't demand from other carriers. Yeah, they're not even a commercial venture. They're a 501(c)(3) venture, but you didn't mind that the CA PC sits out in a building that somebody else owns, and you didn't demand financials from those people the way you did from the community center. So I just want you to ask yourself this: Can you be better? Can you stop and take a look at what you're doing and how you're spending this money, maybe come up with a different idea?
Hi, I'm Josie Urby, 32 Vaughn Street, and I want to first thank you all for giving to your community by being here. My concern is the information that has come up about the lead in the water, and, you know, now we're the extraordinary escape, but we all know we're really the city that water built, and I have a trough with that water. So I feel that we need to really look at that and find a way to deal with this problem. I'm shaking, so we get grounded here. You know, at one level, that means that with all this lead, every water that's holding this lead ends up back into our springs. It's all going back into our springs. It's going back into our lake. It's just a really severe situation. My next concern is that our children are drinking it, and that we were pretty unaware until it just came to light that we have such high lead levels. Lead doesn't belong in water. I would want to see it at zero, and so I'd ask that you just, like, maybe an emergency meeting and figure out what we can do. I would be willing to work, to generate funds, whatever we need, to get water filters to the homes, maybe designate what streets are the worst, find out what kids are being impacted. But it just, like, has to stop right away, because every glass of water, they're getting dumber. And it's not just now, it's throughout their life. It's extremely toxic to the brain of young people. Some of us have more money, and we can afford bottled water, but not everybody can, and we've got to address this and find some kind of solution. So I would suggest some kind of a survey, maybe it could go out to the schools, find out where the kids are. I'll be first and buy some filters, and maybe some other people will join in, but I don't know how to access. And so I think you can be the voice of all of us to find out where these filters are needed, prioritize who gets them, just find a way that we can stop it at that level. Until we can stop it at a city level, we can address the community. So however you can help me, I'd be glad to hear from you. Facebook, message, something. And I talked to the Berkey Company, and my time is up. I did access to others.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Eric Knowles, and I live at Deuceboro Lane. Dear Mayor and City Council of Eureka Springs, I am one of the 25% of city water users who are not given access to the city sewer system. The city has no plans to expand the sewer service to these households. The city set water and sewer rates in Eureka Springs in ordinance 2255 past April 24, 2017. Two years' experience with this rate structure reveals several major and increasing problems. First, the high water rates retained from the previous ordinance are much too high, and this year are 60% higher than is needed to pay the Water Department expenses. This year, the excessive and unneeded revenue will exceed $400,000. These numbers come from the 2019 budget you just passed. Second, the excess water revenue last year was used to make two sewer bond payments. On December 28, the city made principal payments on two sewer bonds. $285,000 was paid from the combined water sewer fund account, and $23,624 was paid from the Sewer Department Infrastructure and Improvement Account. The fact that 25% of the users are prohibited from using the sewer, but their money is used to pay for the sewer is unfair, unnecessary, and, I think, immoral. Third, the infrastructure and improvement charge, which ordinance 2255 added to everyone's bill, is divided in half, everyone's, divided in half, with 50% going to the Water Revenue Department and 50% going to the Sewer Revenue. A portion of the sewer bond payments came last year from this INI fund. This is another unfair, unnecessary, and, I think, immoral burden on the 25% of users who are prohibited from the sewer system. I ask you to add the water and sewer rate changes to your agenda to make it a top priority. I recommend that you first reduce the water rates to bring revenues more in line with expenses, and second, increase the sewer rate if you believe that more revenue is needed to pay for the sewer service and the sewer bond payments, and three, to reduce the INI fee by 50% for those customers who you refuse to provide sewer service for. Thank you for your consideration.
That concludes our public hearing, public comments, rather. That takes us to, under New Business, we'll have, the first item will be the acceptance of the 2017 legislative audit. Get a motion to discuss?
I make a motion that we discuss the acceptance of the 2017 legislative audit.
Second?
All right. Any discussion? We've got Finance Director here, so if there's any comments or anything that... If not, and we need to get an approval for this, that we accept the legislative audit. Get a motion for that?
Well, I think for the people in the community, maybe Lonnie could just speak to it as to how good it was.
Mr. Clark, can you come up and give us a brief summary of our legislative audit?
Sure. The Division of Legislative Audit is a division of the state legislature, and their auditors, the audit, first of all, costs the city nothing, and they audit based on the regulatory basis for the financial statements. And they do a very thorough job, and where they really excel, not only do they audit Well, they do tests, of course, statistical testing, on the revenue and expenses to see that everything is within line, and they also do a... A lot of their audit is regarding if we're in compliance with state statutes. And that opposed to other audits that we might have by CPA firms or whatever. These people are skilled in that area, and so for me, that is very comforting to know that we are in compliance with the state statutes regarding the financials of the city. I talk in some professional organizations with other directors of finance, and they don't have this audit. Why, I don't know, because there's no charge, but they... Just to give you an example, they may not comply with competitive bidding, like is required of us. I mean, they're required to do it, but they may not do it. And there are many other things, and they really hit hard on this. And of course, this 17 audit, they do the counties, they do counties, school districts, cities, and I'm not sure what other things that they audit, but this audit is online. You can go to the Division of Legislative Audit online and download it anytime, and of course, I think you all have copies of it that's mailed to you. And so the... There were no... In this audit, there are no issues of financial nature that they determine where we were out of compliance. There are some issues, of course, and there will always be issues because of segregation of duties in the Finance Department, because we can't afford to hire enough people to segregate all of the duties as they would like them to be. There are some other things that we have corrected. For instance, they, at this point in time, wanted backup copies of our finances, our financial system, to be done every day and stored in an off-site location that's at least three miles from City Hall. We can't comply with that and stay within the city limits. We'd have to send a person to Berryville, for instance, every day to take the backup and retrieve the previous one, since we would be switching out. But at the time they were doing this audit, we were researching a cloud backup system and to find one that was secure and we could count on. But since that time, with the reworking, since our server went down and everything, and now we have a truly professional IT group onboard, and of course, the costs were in the budget that you all passed, that way, we are backed up not only on the East Coast, but the West Coast in very secure environment that we can, if we go down here tonight, we can function on which one, either one where it's more convenient at the time. So we're working through a number of these issues like this, and of course, as we become more and more and more dependent on computers and everything, these types of things are going to surface. So at any rate, that's... Anyway, that's the essence of this audit. Now, I'll take any questions that you might have, but look, it's very thorough. They're here for several weeks doing this, and practically all of the... Everyone that works for Legislative Audit now, the requirement is that they're CPAs, they're well-trained, they have degrees, and they focus on fraud and compliance with state laws. And I'm extremely happy about them doing this, because, you know, the last thing I want is for us to not be in compliance with state statutes, just, you know, and there's a number of them, and you've really got to stay on top of them to comply.
Mr. Bur... Madam Clark?
Mr. Bur, I make a motion that we approve and accept the legislative audit for 2017.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just a question. So the cloud backup is as good as a physical backup taken through?
Actually, I think...
I mean, it's acceptable to...
Yes, it's acceptable to them, and with this situation that we have now, we have backup both on the East Coast and the West Coast. And these backups, the companies that are handling this are secure, they've been approved by, and they handle not just us, but any number of others. And so that's comforting to me, because if they have a, you know, if they have weather or whatever conditions might be on the East Coast, then we can go to the other one, or vice versa.
Further questions or comments? We have a motion on the floor to accept 2017 legislative audit. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Clark. And bring this to our ordinance number 2179.
I make a motion that we discuss revoking ordinance number 2179.
I'll second it. Okay. Ms. Snyder made the motion, Mr. Meyer second. You want to start off?
As stated at the last meeting, back when this ordinance was written several years ago, it was agreed at that time, and then somehow or another never got put into it, that if a councilman was also sitting on planning, they could only vote on an issue in one place or the other due to the unfairness that would entail if they got to vote in both places. And then it turned out, after I looked at some paperwork recently, that that had never been included. So after much discussion about voting in both places or only one, it has been determined that for the safety and well-being of our people and the city in general, it would be better to just revoke this ordinance and not allow a councilman to sit on planning, because any issue that starts at planning and comes to council, if you have the right to vote both times, it can be very unfair to the people. So it would be better to just plain revoke the ordinance and go back to the way it was before.
Any further comments? Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number and read it for its first reading.
Second?
Okay, got a motion by Mr. McLung to assign a number and read it for first reading, and second by Mickey. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be 2275, and ordinance revoking ordinance 2179, ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 130402A regarding Planning Commission membership, whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed ordinance 2179 in the previous law. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, ordinance 2179 is hereby revoked and no longer be in effect after the effective date of this ordinance, and that the Eureka Springs Municipal Code subsection 130402A shall be restored to its wording prior to the passage of ordinance 2179. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect.
All right, get a motion. Mr. McLung?
I can make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2275 on its first reading.
Second?
Okay, motion been made in second to approve it on first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That takes us to our second item of business, information on the Historic District about sidewalk surfaces.
Make a motion to discuss sidewalk surfaces? I can't get it out.
Okay.
Okay.
In your packet, you'll find some notes, I think, from the Historic District Commission on revisions that they are proposing to the sidewalk ordinance in regards to adding aggregate concrete that matches existing adjoining sidewalks. They are recommending that we go ahead, and there's two or three, or there's several pages, but the first page in there is a recommendation that we have our city attorney draft an ordinance to include an item that basically says, "Aggregate concrete that matches existing sidewalks, adjoining sidewalks in color and texture as closely as possible. If there are no adjoining sidewalks to match, the new aggregate should be of close texture with a tinted gray palette preferred. Aggregate sidewalks must follow the concrete specifications set forth in 9.08.06 construction other colors, materials, and artistic treatments." of the colors, materials, and artistic treatment must be approved by the Eureka Springs Historic District. Um, this is on request, I think, by the, uh, member of the city council. And then the following page gives us some items, um, regarding the, uh, the specification that the Public Works has and some costs. And then the next two pages show some photographs of, uh, various limestone and aggregate concrete in there. So, any discussion? Mr. McLean?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, endorse, uh, the HDC's proposal and, and, and request that, that city attorney prepare that ordinance to take care of this.
I'll second that.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
I have a question for the city attorney. What would, what exactly does, uh, with a tinted gray palette preferred, what does that mean? What's-
That would appear to be a term that is probably specific to the, uh, nature of laying concrete. So it is not something that probably you would want to ask me, it would be more, it's something you want to ask the building inspector.
I mean, so if I want to put in a red one, this, your ordinance is just going to say you prefer gray, but?
I think my, if I might answer that, I think what it would have to be, would have to be approved by the Eureka Springs Historic District Commission. If it's any other color other than gray.
Okay. So that, so, uh, repairing your sidewalk has to be, uh, approved by HDC?
Yes. Well, uh, I don't know about the approval, but certainly if you, if you're going to deviate from, from a gray texture, it would be. Colors, materials, or, or treatment, artistic treatment must be approved by the HDC. Yeah. That answer your question?
I'm looking, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor? That's under 2D, or under the item 2D, colors, materials?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I think it says here, uh, you know, to match what's already, if you're fixing it, to match what's already there. But if there's nothing there, then it has to be a gray palette, I suppose. That's just concrete.
Mr. McLean?
I, I don't believe that's correct. I think that it, it, you know, that limestone preferred, but I think they can use concrete instead and, and, uh, with, with these options. And the gray is just to keep it, so it looks kind of like limestone, even though it may be concrete or, you know, it's-
Oh, I, I was just thinking it should be firmer, a firmer statement instead of-
Well, yeah, I guess so.
I, I guess, I think what it says is the new aggregate concrete should be of close texture with a gray palette. So, yes, ma'am?
Well, the, the HDC, this would be in fitting with their guidelines. They can deviate away from guidelines, so that's why they say, uh, may, you know, a tinted gray palette preferred. If someone had something that they wanted different, it, it could go to them and, and it could be allowed because of their guidelines.
Further questions? So we got a motion and, uh, seconded to send this, uh, recommendation to the city attorney to be put into ordinance. Uh, all those in favor, sing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. We can discuss this more when city attorney gets his, all right, ordinance done. Um, all right, that brings us to, uh, update on code enforcement and policy procedures. Motion to discuss?
Uh, I make a motion that we discuss code enforcement and policy procedures. Second.
Okay, I think within your, uh, packet tonight, you've got a list of items that, uh, the building inspector had, had put, uh, put together on various, uh-
Yes.
Various properties, uh, that had, he had submitted, uh, either in warnings or, uh, what the status was of, uh, getting repairs and stuff. He is not available tonight, but he's going to come to the next meeting and discuss his procedures. He's recently, with his computer, uh, and with our new computer system, uh, that we've gotten put in place, he's now going to be able to document and track, uh, his, uh, correspondence and any of the warnings and documentation that he puts out. So he's going to be able to give us on a quarterly basis or a monthly basis as we need, uh, any information in regarding to this. The, uh, we'll say, and it's not mentioned in here, but we talked about, in, in my memory, we talked about having workshops on policies for the Planning Commission and the HDC. And we had, for, especially for new people, we had a, uh, Planning Commission workshop, uh, the day, next day after our council meeting, uh, with, uh, Jim Von Tunglen, who was from Municipal League, came up and held a, a two-hour workshop. And we had a couple of people from the city council there, and, uh, had a new member of the Planning Commission that was also there. And they discussed the various procedures and policies of, of planning that, uh, different, uh, parts of, of the planning, uh, goes on. The HDC is having a workshop, uh, March 6th, uh, and having a person come up from Little Rock with the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program, and they're going to be talking about, uh, policies and procedures. So any of the council members that want to attend that will be available also.
When and where?
March 6th.
Time?
Uh, it's going to be after, I think, their regular meeting, which is at 6 o'clock.
Six plus here, I assume?
Yep. Uh, you know, and I, I think we've talked about a little bit about, uh, the procedures, um, of enforcement that they're having with, uh, with the policies, with the code enforcement, and people who are, uh, with HDC violations, uh, go through the, the process of, of going to Glenna, uh, for any violations that are noted and/or possible violations. And then she's supposed to, between her and Bobby Ray, go out and see if there is a violation there, and if there is a violation, then she'll get with Bobby Ray, uh, or talk to the, uh, reinforce that with the HDC. And if they find it is a violation of what they approved, then they'll have Bobby Ray as just a, uh, a show cause hearing on why their permit shouldn't be revoked on there. Um, anyway, questions?
No, thank you. It's very good, is what I wanted.
Ms. Snyder?
Do you have a, is that meeting for the HDC going to be considered one of the annual?
Yes.
Okay, so that one will be the annual meeting we talked about at the last meeting?
Correct.
Okay, so we still have to get one scheduled for planning?
Well, the planning, we just had one last, the week before, and we're going to have another one in July, but we had, date hasn't been established yet.
Okay, well, the July one would be our annual one, then, because the other ones-
Well, it depends, it depends on, yes, it depends on actually when Mr. Von Tunglen can come back up here again. But we're hoping it's going to be in July.
Okay, but we need our code enforcer and council and planning commissioners, and then Von Tunglen if-
Well, we'll, I'll notify the council when that's, when they're going to have that.
But I mean, but all these people will be involved in-
Will they be at the workshop, I hope.
That's what I mean. That was, that was what the setup was supposed to have been, was those two commissions separately with council and, and building inspectors slash code enforcer.
Does the council, is always available? Yes. That's true.
Okay, so that'll be in July sometime?
That's not what-
Okay, any further questions, Mr. McLean?
Just, uh, on this list that he provided, just, I'm not sure I understand with all, but I don't know if, if each of these is like, if there's a timeline involved with, with what's happened, uh, and, and I assume that there is. It'd be kind of nice to know what that, how that timeline went. You understand what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, I'm confused on that. I'll ask him about that.
Okay.
We can ask him at the next meeting.
Yeah.
May I interject?
Sure.
What Mickey was just discussing was discussed in the early part of the last meetings, number four, but the conclusion was other than what was just mentioned, if you want to take a look at what was decided. So that everybody has a clear picture of how it actually worked out.
Yeah, it went back and forth so many times, I honestly don't remember the exact final wording, but the implication was, implication was that each of those commissions with council and code enforcement-
Well, we will have, uh, the, the HDC will have, uh, a meeting coming up, uh, March 6th. Building Inspector will be there along with a person from Little Rock, and city council is welcome to attend. Uh, we haven't established a firm recommendation on the Planning Commission yet, but hopefully we're looking at July, since Mr. Von Tunglen was just up here.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, all right, going on to our next item, um, discussion of commissioners and council members voting on issues relating to their own business.
Move to discuss?
Second.
Ms. Snyder, you want to lead off?
Um, well, along with the various wording we've been hearing from our local people in regards to voting twice and stuff like that, they're also very concerned in regards to people who have a related business to a vote being taken on their commission. And I'm not sure how we can deal with that because we are a small town, and whether it's city council or some various commissions, you're going to have people on, in these seats that have businesses relating to a, a topic of discussion or a law being passed or whatever. So I'm not sure how we're going to deal with this, but something's got to be worked out because, yes, I can see that be, if you have two-thirds of the community who wants to end this kind of business, but over half of the commission has that business, you have a problem. See what I mean? So we've got to come up with some way to make it fair and equal to the people and the business owners. And I don't know how we're going to do that, but we need to do something.
Ms. Green?
Um, Mr. Weaver, could you explain like a conflict of interest, of course, in regard to a business?
Well, conflict of interest, generally speaking, is that if you derive a benefit from the possibility of participating in the action through your business, you're in conflict to vote or to act on that piece of legislation. So a direct conflict would be, say, if the council was voting to buy supplies from a particular local business and one of the council members owned that local business. That council member should not, by state reckoning, vote because they would be benefiting directly from the profit. Uh, other examples from past in the council have been, we once had a city official whose sister was working for one of the departments, and there was a question came before council as to a raise, and that member of council was not to vote because it was going to benefit a family member if they gave them a new job or an increased job pay. So if it's going to financially benefit you or your direct family to, uh, vote one way or the other, could be a negative vote even, uh, you should not vote. You should not take, participate in the debate. But as far as to, uh, call a conflict of interest, state law says that it has to be called upon yourself. And so there is action that voters can take to remove you, but as far as the other council members, they can't stop you from voting. But it, uh, certainly inappropriate to vote if you're going to make a profit or your direct family is.
Ms. Snyder?
But what if it's a situation, and I, and I'm trying to think of something that we actually don't do in this town. Let's say we all raised chickens. This is our city business is we raised chickens. And on one of our commissions, four of the six people sitting on the commission raised chickens, and an issue comes up where a vote has to be taken on ending chickens for whatever reason. If those four who own the chickens vote, that would be a conflict, that would be unfair. If they don't vote, you've got two people left, nothing gets done. This seems to be the situation we're having with a couple of different issues in town.
Well, the, if it is going to substantially alter one's financial wherewithal, they should not vote. And it does, in a small town, sometimes where multiple people have that problem of, say, raising chickens or whatever it might be, um, may present a problem with coming up with enough votes, but that is up to the electorate whether it wants to continue that system or wants to replace some of the members and thereby put other individuals in those spots and remove the conflicts.
Mr. McLean?
Uh, quite frankly, I think it's covered, uh, by the state, the way, uh, Mr. Weaver's explained it to us already. I, I, I can't imagine what you can be referring to. We've never had it, had it ever come up where there's been, uh, you know, uh, a number like that where, where a, a vote couldn't take effect. I don't, it just seems like it's just kind of out there to me.
Ms. Green?
Um, it kind of came up when we, when the Planning Commission made up new, um, codes or ordinances that any people that had lodging shouldn't be voting. And it does, you know, does it affect my business? Yes. But in how many ways? I mean, everything that's tourism affects my business. If I raise the water rates, it affects my business. So it's kind of a silly thing. What I gather is if it monetarily, like I had a CUP and I was going to sell it to someone, and I voted for the next people to get a CP. That's how I see a conflict of interest. But I wouldn't be able to vote on anything, pretty much anything, because it affects my business in one way or another.
Ms. Green, this is your third time. I'm Ms. Snyder. Sorry.
See, this is exactly why I brought, put this on for discussion. Because we are a small town, this happens. And whether the people don't understand it or we haven't made ourselves clear, I don't know, but that's why this is on there. So people can understand, there's going to, and, and conflict of interest isn't the problem because that's a direct thing. But like you were saying for the lodging, so many of our people on commissions who have to vote- have to vote on lodging issues are lodgers. You know, it's like, what do we do? So is there any kind of action or something that we can say or do or an outlet that the people have that they can check into? This is a major, major concern to an awful lot of the people that we are representing.
Ms. Meyer?
It's the ballot box. It's the ballot box.
You don't.
If there's a whole lot of people that don't like the fact that a certain person is voting for something that might, they think might interest them, well, then they need to run against them or vote differently.
Planning uses a vote.
All right. All right, anything need? Any further discussion?
No.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, item number seven, resolution to pursue the grant for the auditorium remodel. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
We have a resolution authorizing application for acceptance of Arkansas Historic Preservation Restoration Grant to create the ADA compliant meeting space downstairs in the basement of the auditorium. This resolution comes from, is a matching grant that will be utilizing money from the city to match the $132,000. So this does not mean that we've got the grant, this is just a resolution saying that if we get the grant, then we will, we will match the, match the portion required of $72,000 and $346, $72,346.
I move that we assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
You get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Further discussion? Ms. Snyder?
Any idea when we know if we've gotten the grant or not?
We should know, I wanna, I wanna say sometime in April, possibly May, because the grant fiscal year starts on July 1st.
Okay, so if we don't get it, we would just re-up the discussion?
Correct. Any further discussion? All right, we need a roll call.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
The resolution number will be 751, the resolution authorizing the application for acceptance of Historic Preservation Restoration Grant to create an ADA compliant meeting space in the lower level of the city, Eureka Springs City Auditorium. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs is applying for Historic Preservation Restoration Grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for $60,000 to create an ADA compliant meeting space in the lower level of the Eureka Springs City Auditorium. And whereas the city council of Eureka Springs understands that this Historic Preservation Restoration Grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program is a matching grant using $72,346 from the city's capital fund for a total project cost of $132,346. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs mayor is hereby authorized on behalf of the city of Eureka Springs to apply for and if awarded, accept the Historic Preservation Restoration Grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program for the purpose of funding the creation of an ADA compliant meeting space in the lower level of the Eureka Springs City Auditorium, and that the mayor is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our next item, ordinance to vacate 11 Midway. Make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, I guess, to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss the vacating of Midway?
I think Mr. Meyer sorta made that motion there.
Second.
All right, discussion on this, this is, Mr. McClung?
We've already been through this and, so I'd like to go ahead and assign the sort of its a number and read it on its first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. McClung to assign an ordinance number and read on first reading and second by Ms. Snyder. All those in favor, sing fub, any discussion? All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The ordinance number will be 2276, an ordinance vacating a portion of Midway Alley and returning a portion there of, returning a portion thereof. Thank you. Set of eyes is a good thing to the adjoining landowners, plural, whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the petition of the adjoining landowners to vacate the area defined by the following legal description, all of the alley lying between lots three and four of block 22 Freeman's addition to the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows, commencing at the southeast corner of said lot three for the point of beginning, thence north 100 feet, to the northeast corner of said lot three, thence east 16 feet, to the northwest corner of said lot four, thence south 100 feet, to the southwest corner of said lot four, thence west 16 feet, to the point of beginning containing .037 acres more or less. And whereas section 1454-1042 of the Arkansas Code annotated allows the city council to vacate certain streets, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, the section described above is hereby vacated and titled is hereby vested in fee simple to the adjoining landowners. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance code, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect.
Thank you. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2276, first reading.
I'll second that title only.
Ms. McClung made a motion to approve ordinance 2276 on its first reading, and Ms. Green seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, sing fub, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right, that concludes our business there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we read it, ordinance 2276 by title only for its second reading, suspend the rules and read it by title only.
Second.
All right, motion to read ordinance 2276 in its second reading by title only, any discussion? Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2276, an ordinance vacating a portion of Midway Alley and returning a portion thereof to the adjoining landowners.
Ms. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 2276 on the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, sing fub, sing aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. All right, did that conclude our business there? All right, agenda setting. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to put a discussion of our North Street property.
Okay. You get a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconds.
Okay. Any other? All right, council comments. Mr. Thomas?
I have none.
Ms. Green?
Beautiful day out.
Ms. Snyder?
Sorry, I'm out of it tonight. It's what allergies do when Mother Nature can't make up a mind if it's winter or summer. That's it.
Mr. Meyer?
How many chickens can we raise in Eureka Springs?
Is it five?
Well, it depends on the size of your property.
It took a year and a half for the planning commission to make a decision on how many chickens we could actually have per household in city limits. All right.
Mr. McClung?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. We've got the Doker's Masquerade Ball coming up on March 1st at 6:00 p.m. at Ozark Convention Center. On the 2nd, we have the Monte Grande Parade, 2:00 p.m., the Rowdy Beavers, well, it actually starts at the library, but they will be forming up at the Rowdy Beaver at 2:00 p.m. for the day parade. And then starting at, actually German Alley, coming on downtown around 2:00 o'clock. And then on the 3rd, at the auditorium, we've got, we've got talent at 2:30 p.m. And then on the 5th, it's a Fat Tuesday King Cake Ball at 6:00 p.m. at St. Elizabeth Parish Center. I'm not sure, Mr. McClung, is that a reservation or is that first come, first served?
No reservations.
Reservation.
Yes, sir.
So I would suggest if you're planning on going to get your reservations early, 'cause they sell out real quick on there. And that's all I have at this moment, the motion to disern.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.